Will be asked to state their name and address first before they provide. Their comments in the interest of time. And to ensure that you have time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant addresses called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Okay, Ms.
Present.
Mr. Stenbridge.
President, Madam Chair.
All right, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First off, are there any withdrawals or deferrals? From the agenda this evening? Hearing none, then we will move on. The first case we have this evening is BOA. One four one, one four, one nine with an address of two thirty-four Parson Street. Is the applicant or any of the team members present?
Oh, yes, Luke Hubbard and Allison Armstrong were the owners of the property. And we have also our architect Carl on as well.
Hi, Carl Solander.
Thank you. Perfect. So please just briefly walk us through the most relevant slides and what you know, what relief you're seeking.
Yep. So the project is seeking both front yard and rear yard setback relief. It is continuing on with the existing setbacks of the existing building and the accompanied porches. Next, on the attached townhouses.
Any questions, any questions or concerns about the plans?
Madam Chair, I had the chance to review the drawings and they were adequate. No questions from my end.
Okay, great. Mr. Stenbridge, any questions?
Not yet, Madam Chair.
Okay, any, anything else about your plans you just want to share before we open it up for testimony?
Yep. So I think the two things that were raised when we were talking to the Butters and going through the community process were. On parking and you know, potential impact there. We will be having a new curb cut put in. But with that, you know, we'll have, we haven't trying a driveway and a two car tandem garage. So really kind of four off-street parking for taking up one currently and we'll also be taking our current, our car off the street. The other piece when you're going through the community process with the BIA was on the original. Design that we had, which was a little bit more contemporary, we're using cement board paneling. And they're looking to really get something a little bit more alike to the neighboring porches. So we submitted and hopefully you received that, the updated rendering of that with a white ship lap. So kind of more, more consistent with what was there currently.
Great. May I have a public testimony? Is, I'm sorry, is Sam or Stephanie running that?
That would be Francis. I don't see any raised, Madam Chair.
My apologies, Madam Chair, you have no raised hands. Oh, no raised hands. Okay, thank you, Francis. And just to, I know, just to read it into the record. You know, we do have recommendations from the BPDA, so I will just read that into the record. The Boston Planning and Development Agency recommends approval with proviso that plans be submitted to the agency for design review. With that, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next case is BOA. One four zero, six four, eight nine with an address of forty Park Lawn, Park Lawn Road. Is the applicant or any of the team members present?
Maribeth? Maribeth? Okay, not sure. Is there anyone here to speak on this project forty Park Lawn Road? No. Okay, someone says.
Here in the chat.
Maribeth Fitzgerald and she's mute muted. Are you, is someone able to unmute her?
Yeah, I unmuted her. I'm not sure. She should be able to unmute herself. I'm unmuted her. It's not.
Okay, Maribeth, you need to unmute yourself. Maribeth?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's because she's unmuted currently. She may have technical difficulties.
Yeah. Well, can I suggest we move on and come back to her when she's able to get on?
Sure. The next case is BOA. One four one, nine zero, two four with an address of twenty-five Mendham Street. Is the applicant or any of his, or their team members present?
Yes, Doug Stefanov, architect with a business, business address of four twenty-three West Broadway. South Boston, present on behalf of Bob Pavia. We also have Joe Roll. Benchmark Strategies and the owner present and the sidelines if there's any questions. Madam Chair, members of the board, first, thank you for seeing us tonight. Come to work before you something fairly simple. Bob Pavia bought a two-family building here in Rosendale back in two thousand and fourteen. And unbeknownst to him, the basement wasn't properly finished or legitimized. But was used such at the time. So that got flagged. And since has been removed from use, but he'd like to now make the basement part of the first floor. With legitimate bedrooms with proper egress. There's no change of occupancy. And we actually do have off-street parking, so the, the changes are internal to the building. Other than the area ways on the side lot line. Therefore, the two violations generated with floor area ratio and the side yard by nature of the area ways.
Again, those are pre-existing violations. Is that correct?
Well, yes, they're existing violations based on this, this request.
Okay, and what is the height of the basement and, you know, the window situation? And then just, are there bedrooms in the basement or what's the basement versus first floor?
Well, currently, there, there is a stair that spiral stair that Bob put in when he first purchased the property. We have over eight feet of head clearance in the basement. The current windows in the basement are not proper egress sized. So they don't have the threshold, the sill or the proper opening. There are some windows. The back of the building is actually a walkout. So the back of the building walks out to grade. As you can see in the plans in, in front of you, well, that spiral stair, the switchback stair. So they just use the, currently the basement's used for storage is the first floor tenants.
Any questions, Ms. Betterara about the plans?
Yes, I don't have any questions because it, the basement does have two means of egress. So the basement occupancy is fine.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge, any questions? All right. Hearing none, may I have a public testimony? Francis, is there any, are there any raised hands?
Council Royal's office.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Jordan Frey is here from Council Ricardo Royals Office. We'd like to go on record in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, and just to read it into the record. Boston Public, Boston Planning and Development Agency recommends approval with proviso that no building code relief be granted. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval with BPDA design review. And that no code be violated, no building code be violated.
No building code relief be granted or no building, okay?
Well, it's the same thing, but yes, there will be no building code relief granted.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Betterara?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA. One four one, five five, four five with the address of thirty-four Sedgwick Street. Is the applicant or any of their team members present?
Yes. Hello, my name's Andrew Rec with OKL Architects. The owners, or at least some of them are present this evening. Ginny and Kent and Monica and Martin. Also, Lee Yang from my office is here. And the general contractor, John Marsubian from Twin Peaks is here as well. So this will be an owner occupied and multi-generational home. Ginny and Kent will live downstairs and their daughter and son-in-law will live upstairs with their young family. So as part of this whole house renovation project, the main aspects of the scope that bring us here this evening. Are one, to remove the existing garage. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but it's on the top of the left site plan.
We can't see your cursor. It's fine.
Okay, so look on the, if you see on the top of the left site plan, you can see that. Removing the rear porches on the back of the house and the treacherous stairs. And to create a two-story addition that will allow for safe and comfortable access off the driveway and improve circulation throughout the house. And we'd also like to add an attic dormer to increase living space. And you can see that in the hatched area on the right. Plot plan on the, the left portion of the roof. Thirty-four Cedric Street is an existing non-conforming lot. And it contains an existing two-family dwelling and detached garage. And there are five areas where we're seeking zoning relief from the board. We believe these requests to be minimal in nature and in keeping with the scale and the architectural style of the neighborhood. And we hope you agree. The first one has to do with floor area ratio. With the, and I was going to just use the first few slides, but we can, we can, we can certainly go back and forth. The proposed work would increase the existing non-conforming FAR from point six five to point seven seven. This is a minimal increase of less than five hundred square feet. The second one has to do with building height as it relates to the number of stories. And we calculated this two ways. We accounted for the gross attic floor area with both the finished and unfinished area with walls four feet or higher. And the calculation for a half story minimally exceeds the limit by eighty-eight square feet. However, accounting for the finished space only or the proposed finished space only. The total floor area with walls four feet or higher is actually forty-four feet, square feet below the limit. The remaining items have to do with setbacks. And so we can, I can talk about those as they're here. So the front yards setback, there's currently an attic dormer on a hip roof. And it's might be hard to see, but the, the windows up in the attic and there's an area around it that are shaded. That's existing. If you look at the top drawing. We would be looking to infill what's now remaining hip roof and make that a gable roof, maintaining the existing overhang. And this is consistent with, with other houses adjacent and, and in the neighborhood. The gable would be in plain with the front wall of the house and would not further approach into the existing non-conforming front yard setback. The, if, if you want to go to the next slide, we'll have to kind of go back and forth a little bit.
Could I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
You mentioned, mentions demolishing the existing detached garage. So are you then replacing that or is that to make way for the two-story addition in the rear?
The, so the garage will, will be removed and it actually opened up a lot of open space in the backyard. And nothing will be put in its place. The, the addition that I was referring to, the two-story addition would essentially replace where the porches are now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so on this, so the top drawing is the side yard setback. Opposite the driveway. And you can see on the top. The proposed design would create a. A shed dormer. The shed dormer would be in plain with the current sidewall of the house and would not further approach into the existing non-conforming side yard setback. And the shed dormer would, sorry?
I'm just going to interrupt real quickly to ask if, if Ms. Bedbaraza has any questions on the plans. We don't necessarily need you to walk through the whole thing, so.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, I did review the drawings and the drawings are adequate. I don't have any further questions.
Yeah, and you just answered mine. So, Mr. Stenbridge, do you have any questions or concerns?
Does any change to the access or egress in the building?
The only change would be on the rear of the house, we'd be removing the existing porches and replacing them with. A code compliant and more safe entrance, both to the first floor and to the second floor as well.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. I just want to, you know, because it's, it's fairly straightforward. So I just didn't want you to walk through the whole thing if.
Oh, no, no, no. Whatever, whatever information you need.
Thank you. Let's, let's hear a public testimony, if there is any.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the mayor's office defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. Our office hosted a Butters meeting on Monday, November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Where the applicant and their team addressed questions and concerns by neighbors. They received support from many direct Butters as well as the JPNC. Zoning Committee. At this time, Mayor's Office like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no raised hands, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. And I will read. The BPDA's recommendation is approval with proviso that plans be submitted. To BP, BPDA for design review with particular attention to design and dimension of proposed dormers. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval with BPDA design review paying special attention to the design and size of the dormers.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Betterara?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA. One four one, I'm sorry. Case them, case BOA. One three nine, one four, zero nine with an address of forty-seven Aubrey Road. Is the applicant or any of their team present?
Yeah, I'm here. Bruce Miller, architect.
Can you put your name and address into the record?
Okay. How do I do that?
Oh, just state it, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, state, yeah, Bruce Miller, architect. Twenty-five John A. Andrews Street, Jamaica Plain.
Thank you. Are you presenting on this?
Well, I thought my client was going to present, but I'm not sure my client's here.
Yeah, no one else has checked in.
Okay, I'm happy to present.
If you're, if you're able to, that would be great.
Yeah, I'm not super prepared, but pretty straightforward.
Would you prefer, it's up to you, either.
I'm happy to.
Okay, great, then please proceed.
Okay, so this is a two and a half story colonial house built in the twenties. My client has just had another child. They want to increase the size of the house. And do that by renovating the third floor, which would involve adding two. Doghouse dormers to the front of the house and then a shed dormer across the back of the house. That violates zoning in two ways. One, it's an existing non-conforming house that's over the side yard setback line. So the new dormers would cross that setback line. And additionally, it's, you know, above the height limit because it's adding a third story. And Matt has been through all the neighborhood approvals and.
Yep, I think Connor will share that with us from ONS.
Yeah.
Any questions on the plans, Ms. Betterara?
No questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge, any questions?
No questions, Madam Chair.
All right, with that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted a Butters meeting October sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. The applicant received support from several direct Butters as well as the Jamaica Hills Association. And the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council Zoning Committee. At this time, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
I have no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. BPDA recommendation approval with proviso plans be submitted to BPDA for design review. With attention to the dormers, dorm, yeah, dimension of the dormers. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval with BPDA design review paying special attention to the design and size of the dormers.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Betterara?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Mr. Stenbridge, would you like to try a park lawn again? I think they said they're on.
Um.
That would be great.
Or can we check if they're on first, Maribeth?
Can you hear me?
Perfect. So let's go back to them then.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So we'll go back to case BOA. One four zero, six four, eight nine with an address of forty Park Lawn Road. And I believe the applicants and, and their team members are present.
Yeah, it's actually just me. Thank you.
That's perfect. Yep, I mean, it's just to quickly walk us through it, you know. Thank you.
Absolutely. So I, I've been in my house for almost thirty years and. We decided to build a, put a deck on the back and the rear of the home. But unfortunately exceeded the setbacks on, on the right side and, and the rear. So we hired an architect to do up some plans, pulled in the surveyor. And this is the result of our, the plan that we came up with. I'm not sure what else. What are the details? Dimensions are roughly fourteen by twenty with the stair and the landing. Yeah, it's pretty basic.
Yep, it sure is. Any, any questions from the, from the board?
Madam Chair, I don't have any further questions. Drawings are adequate.
None, none at the moment, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. May I have public testimony?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Dan Hudson from the Office of Neighborhood Services. We're going to defer, defer to the judgment of the board on this. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council held a meeting on November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And voted unanimously in support. Again, we're going to defer to the judgment of the board on this.
Thank you. Any other reason?
I have no raised hands.
Excellent. Well, with that, BPDA recommends approval. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Betterara?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Next, we have case BOA. One three six, zero five, three zero. At the address of one eighty-three Chestnut Avenue. Is the applicant or anyone associated with them present?
I had no one checking for that address.
Okay.
Okay, shall we move on and come back to that then?
Then, in that case, the next case is BOA. One three seven, six nine, seven nine with an address of eleven Sharon Street. Is the applicant or anyone associated with them present?
Yes, we are.
Excellent. Can you identify yourself and your name and address for the record?
My name is Joseph Karen. This is my wife, Rose Marie Karen. The address is eleven Sharon Street, Hyde Park, Mass, zero two one, three six.
Great. And I know you're doing a driveway. So can you just let us know, is there an existing curb cut, new curb cut, number of spaces and?
Oh, no. Problem isn't, it's not a driveway. It's actually a mud. And what it is, is it's, it's too close. It'll be too close to the fence and the other house. So they, so they denied it. But I mean, I'm willing to, I'm willing to make it smaller. But we need this mudroom because we don't have anywhere to put our clothes and our coats and everything. So. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. It's just a smaller room off the side of the house. It's not heated. It's just going to be a little room, you know what I mean?
Got it.
So.
Okay, any, any questions or concerns from the board?
No questions at all. Pretty straightforward.
No.
All right, I think we agree. It's pretty straightforward. Any public testimony?
Ah, yes, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Our liaison had to deal with a family emergency. From what I understand, there's, there's no concerns that we're aware of at this time. Hold on, again, right now. They had no opposition from the Butters. We held the meeting on November eleventh. And they completed the community process. With that, we defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Thank you.
Any other? No, no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. BPDA recommend, recommends approval. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Betterara?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case is BOA. One four one, seven six four eight with an address of forty-seven Melville Avenue. Is the applicant or anyone representing them present?
I had no one check in for that address.
Okay.
Okay, let's keep moving on then and we'll circle back.
Then next on the list is case BOA. One four zero, seven two, five three with an address of one forty-four Elmer Road. Is the applicant or anyone representing them present?
Uh, yes, present.
All right, perfect. Can you put your name and address in the record?
Uh, yeah, my name is Edwin Tran. Uh, this is my father Tommy Tran. And we're representing one forty-four Elmer Road.
Perfect. Can you just tell us briefly what you're, what you're proposing?
Uh, yep, so in that slide that you're on right now, that's the current existing plans. We have two kind of like back deck things over there. You can see on the, on the right side. With a metal spiral staircase connecting them. And our proposed plans are to close the bottom patio. For just a handful of reasons. A lot of my siblings have moved out of the house in recent years. So, you know, the house is just elderly people. They don't really use the outdoors that much because they have allergy problems. But yeah, so they're just trying to close up that back section. They're getting rid of that metal staircase and they're. Trying to put in a external staircase that will lead to the second unit upstairs. And also just to alleviate snow shoveling issues for them. And I think, I think the only issues we had were the new proposed staircase. If you go to maybe page six of the plans. Uh, maybe the next one? Yep, there we go. So I'll go down one more slide. And you can see that, yep, compared to the existing plans, there's a little on the upper left corner. That's where the new, that's where the new staircase is going to be. And so it increases the area by a little bit. And I believe. Well, we don't have enough footage or something from the staircase to the fence. I think that's the issue.
Any, any questions on the plans?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Excellent. Mr. Stenbridge?
Likewise.
Perfect. With that, may I have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office hosted a Butters meeting on July thirteenth. There were no concerns raised from the neighborhood and we received one call that expressed support for this project. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Newman.
And no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Excellent. With, with that, may I have a motion?
Would you like to read the BPDA?
I sure can. BPDA recommends approval, straight approval. With that, may I have a motion?
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Betterara?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, Mr. Tran.
I thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Next, next we have case. Next, next we have case BOA one four two two six four zero. It's an address of nine Dennison Street. Is the applicant or anyone representing them present?
Yes, I am here. Stephanie Soriano, owner of nine Dennison Street.
Great. Can you briefly walk us through your proposal?
Yes, so when I bought this home in two thousand eight, it was a two-family. Um, it had two kitchens, two entrances, two egresses. I moved in there with my husband and children. We lived there as a single family, so we changed it to be truthful, we changed it to a single family because that's how we were residing in it. Um, since then, I have children that have gone off to college. Nothing's been changed in the house. It still has the two kitchens. Uh, both two, uh, an entrance for both the first and second floor, egress for both the first and second floor, two different systems throughout. So there's no construction that's going to be needed. I just want to legally change it to a two. In terms of parking, uh, ninety-eight percent of the homes on the street have driveways where they park. There's never been really a parking issue. Uh, we've always had three cars. We're actually down to two. Um, and there's been, there hasn't been an issue with parking. Um, so I think, uh, so I'm just asking that it be formally changed to a two-family now.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have no questions.
Likewise, no question, Madam Chair.
Excellent. May we have public testimony?
Is there? No raised hands, Madam Chair.
Yeah. So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. I mean, a Butters meeting was held on November twenty-eighth. There were no attendees, but they did meet with Garrison Trotter. Uh, where they feel because there's no work needed to be done, um, and there's no impacted community. Um, they showed no opposition and there's no other known concerns brought to our office. So at this point, we would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds straightforward. And BPDA recommends with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA one three six four five eight six. The address of forty-six Linwood Street. App, is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, thank you very much. Leslie Delaney Hawkins with Prince Lobel Ty on behalf of the applicant. And with me is Bob Purton, who is the owner occupier.
Okay, can you walk us through your request?
Absolutely. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Purton purchased and has lived in this residence for approximately forty years. He is seeking to install a curb cut and to pave with a permeable substance a portion of his front yard to create two parking spaces. Um, while we understand that front yard parking has its challenges for both maneuverability and sightlines. Uh, in this specific instance, this is a unique lot, given the retaining wall on one side and the concrete existing walk on the other. As you can see, it's a very narrow lot, which would not allow side yard or rear yard, rear yard parking. In this instance, we think that the uniqueness of the lot, coupled with the fact that this is a, a street that desperately needs additional parking and the two, well, one curb cut, the curb cut would take one spot. The net, the two spots would result in one net uh, increase in parking. And so that we're hopeful that, given the fact that this is owner occupied and he's a longtime resident and that he's put a significant amount of work into shrubbery and other, uh, you know, decorative plantings that would shield uh, the right of way from that parking, that this is something the board would be open to. And we would, of course, work with BTD and PIC for their respective approvals.
So just to clarify, is he using it currently for one car and he's trying to add a second, or is he not using it at all for parking?
Currently, it is not used at all for parking. And he actually also owns, uh, the abutting rear lot, which he purchased from the city, which is open space. Uh, so there is a significant amount of open space between the two parcels.
And there is an existing curb cut?
There is not an existing curb cut.
Okay, so we'd be adding one. Okay. Uh, any questions, uh, Ms. Better Baraza?
Madam Chair, I have no questions.
Okay, and obviously BTD is not on, so we don't have a BTD recommendation. Uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
But we do have BPDA recommendation.
We do. I can read it now if you prefer. Uh, BPDA recommends denial because this is front yard parking. With, uh, any questions, Mr. Stenbridge?
Uh, there is an email from, uh, Robert D'Amico.
Oh, there is. Can you read that to us, please?
Um, forty-six Linwood Street has front yard parking, request denial.
Okay.
That is what it states, but in terms of, if I heard correctly, this will take parking off of the street?
Uh, correct, sir. It would be a net increase of one additional parking spot. So we would, the curb cut would take one on-street parking spot, but creating two parking spots in the front yard.
And are there, are there other houses on that street with the front yard? I'm guessing not.
Mr. Purton, if you are on, do any of your neighbors have front yard parking as well?
Um, I don't know if you would actually call it front yard. I guess technically, no.
No one else does, you mean? Okay, um, may I have public testimony?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. Um, and a Butters meeting was held on September fifteenth, where Butters, um, showed support for the project. Um, they met with Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition, where they voted in support with eleven in favor, one opposed, and four, um, people absent. And at this point, we would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
I have no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, any other questions from the board?
No, no questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to put a motion of denial due to the violation of the zoning code that you're not allowed to have front yard parking.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one three seven zero four nine eight. Address of forty-five Drakehead Street. Is the applicant or any, any representative for them present?
No one checked in for that address.
Okay, not a lot of popularity on these curb cuts. All right, let's keep going.
Okay, uh, next, we will have case BOA one three nine zero three seven seven, the address of one eighteen Boden Street. Is the applicant or any representative for them present?
Alamein?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, uh, this is Mr. Uga Alamein, one hundred eighteen Boden Street. From Deborah Moncras City Gallery, Ethiopian Orthodox Church. A decent addition to the church, the violation is insufficient side yard and rear yard. And we have a support from Civic Association.
Okay, what, I'm sorry, what's the addition you're making to the church?
For the church, for addition for the church.
I know. What are you adding?
We are adding, uh, from the back, like for our office and for the ex, uh, like, uh, extra for the, the preaching area for the priest.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions.
Okay, uh, may I have public testimony?
Hi, good evening, um, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Ashley Gomes from the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. Um, some background information on the community process. Um, our office held in the Butters meeting on October third of two thousand and twenty-two. All the Butters of Meeting House Hill Civic Association are in favor and support this project. Uh, no impact on the community. There was one neighbor that was concerned about um, cars using the lot next to the building for parking, which is something we don't handle. Uh, with that, we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you. Francis, any other raised hands?
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, and for the record, BPDA recommends approval. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck with your addition.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night.
Next, we have case BOA one four three one six three three. With an address of two forty-four Newbury Street. Is the applicant or any representative for the present?
Is, is it Mr. Spitz?
Yes, Jason, you, you can unmute yourself.
Yes.
Well, you are unmuted.
My name is Jason Zubi. I'm the owner of the Boston Tattoo Company.
Great. Are you presenting?
Yes, for two forty-four Newbury Street.
Okay, great. Can you, uh, so can you just let us know what you, uh, this is an existing, uh, business. Are you shrinking the restaurant to accommodate for this establishment or just let us know what, how you're incorporating it?
So, uh, at one point, the restaurant was two levels. Uh, there was an existing restaurant in the basement level and we would be taking over the, I guess, like, street level first floor, uh, for our tattoo studio. So we're looking for a, a use, change of use.
Excellent. And all the work is interior, correct?
Yes, it is very minimal. Uh, you know, it's real construction. What we're doing is adding sinks and, um, you know, the way the plumbing and the buildings laid out, uh, there's adequate, you know, sources of water and drainage. So there shouldn't be too, too intrusive.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any questions from the board?
So just to confirm, all the work is mainly on that first floor, correct? There's no work on a garden floor level?
No.
Okay, great. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I, uh, take public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Has some background information in the community process. Uh, the applicant met with the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay, uh, who voted not to oppose this proposal. Uh, we then had them fly within three hundred feet of the property and received two letters of opposition to the proposed use. Uh, with that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and I don't, I don't see a BPDA recommendation. I don't know if someone else does.
No, they didn't have a recommendation.
All right. So with that, may I have a motion?
Um, Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review on exterior signage.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA one three nine six two zero six. With an address of forty-three South Bremen Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Excellent. Can you put your name and address into the record and briefly share your plans?
Sure. Uh, my name is Troy Retzer. I'm at, uh, ten New Street, apartment eleven oh three in East Boston. And I'm here tonight with my business partner, Liz Kelly. And we're very excited to be presenting in front of the board here. Uh, so forty-three South Bremen Street is actually a train caboose, uh, that's the, at the head of the Mary Ellen Welsh Greenway in East Boston. So this project is being done alongside the city of Boston Parks Department, who owns the property. And with the support of the friends of Mary Ellen Welsh Greenway, who maintain the surrounding area. So this project entails converting and renovating the caboose from its current form, where it is being used to store landscaping equipment, uh, into an ice cream and coffee shop. Uh, so we worked with our architects at Joy Street Design and our contractors at DHI Contracting uh, to design these plans, which include installing a new interior, adding windows and a sliding door, cabinets and shelving, and the bathroom and sinks. Uh, I do quickly want to note that no customers will be entering the caboose. Uh, all service will be done uh, alongside the window, or I'm sorry, through windows on, alongside the caboose. Um, and this conversion will add much-needed retail space to East Boston. Uh, ensure the caboose stays well-maintained. It's currently covered in graffiti and we can't wait to change. And, uh, really beautify the small surrounding park. Uh, so Liz and I are just incredibly honored to have the opportunity to restore such a unique structure for the community to enjoy.
That sounds awesome. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
The, the, um, I did have a question, and I don't know if we have our legal, legal counsel on the line.
Francis, anyone?
Unfortunately, um, Ms. Baraza, counsel is not available at the moment.
Okay.
Depending on what it is, I might be able to assist or we might have to.
Okay, I mean, I, I found it, um, just interesting that, uh, that I, I would imagine the variance is just for, just to use basically, because this is not really a permanent structure. It's a, it's a mobile, mobile structure. So I just wanted clarification that the use is, i- it's really just for use. Because it's not a building. It's not a permanent structure.
Correct, it is for use.
Okay, great. Other than that, no further question. I, I think this project's super cool.
Yeah, it's great. Yeah. Mr. Stenbridge, any questions?
No questions, Madam Chair.
All right, with that, I'll take public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, they completed a full community process and, and liked this board. Uh, many members of Jeffrey's Point shared your enthusiasm uh, for this proposal and called into our office to express full support. Uh, with that, we defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
All right, this is, this is a cool use. Hopefully I'll make my way down there.
Please, you guys are all invited.
With, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so, so much. Have a great night.
You too.
Next, we have case BOA one three nine six five nine five. With an address of twenty-six Crestway Road. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, I am the applicant. My name is Marco Rivas. I'm also the, uh, owner of two-family house. This is an owner-occupied. We are proposing to place two spot parking. There is an existing curb cut. We went through the, uh, community process without, uh, any rejections. Uh, now, we just looking, there is no change in the occupancy, just on the use from the, uh, green space to the parking.
So I'm sorry, so currently are you, is there any parking in the rear or this is brand-new request?
It's no request. There is a, uh, there is an existing, uh, curb cut. There is no parking, so I'm looking to play out for the parking spot. There is two big developments in both sides of the property. One is going through the, um, surface and on the other side, there is already finished five units development. They are, they have parking. But we are, we're having issues really parking on the street.
I just, uh, I don't know, Ms. Brad Raza, can you tell where the two spots are? I can't see them in this plan, sorry.
I think the proposal is to have the two spots, uh, right in front. Yeah, is it side by side or is it in tandem?
Yeah.
In tandem.
In tandem, okay. Yeah, so it's wide enough to have a side by side. So what's the dimension of the existing curb cut?
Uh, it's twelve, twelve feet.
Twelve feet, okay. And what's the width of the proposed pavement?
Uh, the width, the two spots that, uh, we are proposing, it's nine feet by nineteen. One next to each other.
Okay, so it's about, um, you know, probably twenty feet wide?
Something like that.
Okay. Do we have on record with Bob D'Amico, uh, any feedback from BTD?
Mr. Stenbridge?
Um, for twenty-six Crestway, um, the, um, the suggestion was to deny the request.
That was from Bob D'Amico or BPDA?
That was from Bob D'Amico.
Is it based on front yard parking, Mr. Stenbridge?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay. Uh, do we have public testimony?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. This town, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, some background information, the community process. Uh, they went through a full community process. Our office received one letter of support from a directive letter. Uh, with that, we defer to the judgment of this board. Our office received one letter of support from a director of butter. Uh, with that, we defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
May I ask the applicant, is there, um, so what's the current parking situation on street? Is it, um, permit only, or is there, is there parking allowed on the street?
There is an emergency parking spot, so every time that there is, uh, any emergency, like as now events, we have to. Drive by to look, uh, for the parking spot, because there is big, a big development. It's going currently into the, uh, surface in one side, and it's, they basically. Taking over the full, the whole street. And on the other side of the property. They already finished one, um, five unit development.
So there's, but there's on-street parking allowed on both sides?
Uh, no, just on one side.
Just one side, okay. Uh, any other questions from the board?
No fur- no further questions. Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's just a interesting, uh, there is a curb cut, but there's, it's a high grade, so there's like a retaining wall.
Right.
Um. But it is front yard parking, that's the only issue.
I guess I'm more, Ms. Better, would, would the second car in tandem also be considered front yard parking?
They're both, yeah, because there's, the, the, it's not wide enough to have, uh, a driveway on the side of the house, so. The only open space would be front yard.
Okay. Uh, was that?
I might also.
Oh, I'm sorry?
I may state that there is two properties next to my house that they have, um, parking in front of the houses. One is right in the corner in Waldemar Street, and the other one is on the, um, Crestway Road itself, also on the, uh, front of the properties.
Yeah, but the, the, uh, right adjacent to your property, it's deep enough. That they can park where it's not considered front yard. From what I'm seeing in the Google image.
Yeah. And, and we can't really speak to anybody else if they're, you know. Whether they're, whether they sought any variances or are doing it, I don't, we don't know. We don't have that information. Um, with that, may I have a motion?
Can, can you read what BPDA recommended?
Uh, yes, sorry, um.
For the record.
BPDA recommends denial, uh, due to this being front yard parking. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a motion of denial due to it being a, not allowed under the zoning code, the front yard parking.
May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, the Chair also votes, uh, yes, the, the motion carries. I'm sorry. Huh, forgot my roll call, Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Nor, uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, now the, the Chair votes yes, motion carries. It's not even a long night yet. Sorry about that. All right, um, do, uh, Ms. Francis, uh, did the, any of the prior, uh, cases show up? If not, we'll move on to discuss, rediscussions.
No, we can continue.
Okay, thank you.
For a rediscussion from five P M. Uh, we have case number BOA one three six, three nine, four one. An address of one oh four to one oh six Trenton Street. Is, is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Marancy, business address of one sixty-eight. Eighth Street, South Boston, first floor. Uh, with me today is the applicant, uh, Tony Patel. Um, as you could see here, this is a rediscussion. Um, the last time we met, we asked for a deferral, uh, to meet with the civic group for a second meeting. Uh, the first meeting was just basically informational. The second meeting was a vote, which was hosted last night, and it was a s- a successful vote in favor. Um, so again, this is a proposal for a conditional use permit. To change the occupancy from a dry cleaners, which is a non-conforming use, to a convenience store, which is another non-conforming use. Uh, by way of background, the same proposal, uh, went through a public process and was voted, uh, from this board in two thousand and sixteen in approval. Um, however, subsequently, uh, after that approval, it was discovered that there was some serious contamination in the basement. Um, so the owner and as well as the applicant had a, has been a significant amount of time and money to remediate that, which was. Um, a little over of, of a two-year process. Uh, little did the applicant know at that point in time that this permit would expire if they did not, uh, pull the permits within the two years since the approval. Um, so again, uh, when they went to go pull it, they discovered that there was an issue. Um, so they had to reapply, then the pandemic took off, so that's why they are back here today, uh, with the same exact proposal. Um, as you can see from page two on the, uh, on the plans, it shows the existing condition of the basement, as well as the existing condition of the actual dry cleaners. Uh, page three will show the proposed layout of the one-story commercial building. Uh, basement will remain, uh, storage as well. Um, as you can see that there is sign proposed here, uh, which is, which is complying under section eleven point two. But also will have to go through further review under the BPDA Design Review. Uh, hours of operation will be six A M. to nine P M. Um, and, uh, that's, that's, that's. I'm gonna pass it over at this point in time for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Absolutely. So just, uh, to confirm, uh, the work is mainly interior?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, no questions for me. Any questions from the board?
No further questions, Madam.
No.
Uh, with that, the testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, some background information on the community process. O N S hosted a Butters meeting on October fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, some of Butters voiced some concerns over litter and how trash would be stored, uh, from the store. Other Butters also stated that there were too many stores around the same block, so there was no public need for another one. Um, one director of butter did express support, as he stated, he was happy to see something at the site that has been vacant for so long, um, up to twenty-three years. The applicant went on to meet with the Eagle Hill Civic Association, where that group voted to support this proposal. Uh, with that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Any other testimony? Okay, with that, uh, BPDA's recommendation is. Approval with proviso that plans be submitted to BPDA for design review for any exterior changes or signage. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of BPDA Design, I'm sorry, a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review on exterior signage, Oney.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, mo- motion carries. Good, good luck.
Great, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Um, all right, well, we have. Three cases who were not present. Are they still not present?
Um, Madam Chair, I actually have Phil Lewis with forty-seven Melville.
Okay. Phil, you can state your name and address for the record, please. Uh, do we want Mr. Stenbridge to read that back into the record? Does he need to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that would be case BOA one four one, seven six four eight. With an address of forty-seven Melville Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
Yes, there it is.
Hi, Phil.
Hello.
Yes, stay, yep, stay your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Philip Lewis, and I'm, I'm owner of a building at, uh, forty-seven Melville Avenue. My proposal is to, um, put in a two-car garage with a, uh, deck on top. And, um, with stairs going up, um, on the second floor, and, um, two-car garage underneath with, uh, windows at the side. And also sliding door up top, uh, glass sliding door on top to enter the premises from the deck to the second floor.
Okay. Um, any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions. I drawing to adequate.
Okay, can, can I confirm, ha- has any of this work started?
Uh, yes.
And how far along is it?
Um, we have, um, um, actually. Uh, put on the, um, the, the, the top of it, but it's not completed as yet. Um, we need additional, um, you know, uh, agreement from, um, the city to continue with the, um, present work that was performed, um, before.
Okay, that there, I just, I saw some concerns, uh, about, uh, proximity to your neighbors and whatnot, so I just, if you could just talk about how close you are.
Um, um, uh, I, I, it's made up, um, with a proper line. Um, where the house is. I just continued with the same variances going back, um, with a variance of the present, um. Um, um. Condition where the houses. So I spoke to my neighbors already, and, um, they're in agreement with, um, with what I'm proposing. And I don't think I have any, um, opposition to it, so that's why I'm asking for, um, you know, approval on this.
Any questions, uh, Ms. Better Browser or Mr. Stenbridge?
Um, how recent is that, that you talked with a neighbor, because, um. We do have one letter of opposition dated February, dated February fifteen.
From your butter at fifty-one Melville, Melville.
Um, at fifty-one Melville?
Yes, sir.
I spoke to them a while ago, um, because this, this, this was proposed a long time ago from. Um, when was it? Last year? This is going, going on over a year. So I spoke to them, um, about it previously. And, um, I did not have any, um, problem of, um. Um, disagreement with it. So if this is a, a new situation, it's, it's new to me, to be honest with you. Um. Can I, can I see?
Um, can I ask, uh, the garage placement is basically where your old garage is, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so the footprint of the garage stays the same. The only, the only difference is you're kind of extending the deck on the second floor.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Uh. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood. This time, Mayor.
Ward. Uh, Con- Connor, you're cutting out. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can, yes.
Perfect, I should have to stand up in my apartment. Uh, we, we don't have a lot of information on this. Um, we can confirm that a Butters meeting was held. Uh, back in July, uh. We, we had it July twenty-first. Uh, no one was in attendance for that of Butters meeting. Uh, the applicant tried to meet with the Melville Park, uh, Civic Association. However, they didn't have plans initially to present to the group, so no vote was taken. Uh, we don't have any further documents at this time with any letters of support or in opposition. Um, with that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh. So I, I see someone in the chat. Do you wanna? Olivia though? Brooke, you, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please?
So my name is Brooke Baker. Uh, I live at fifty Melville Avenue, and I've lived there since nineteen seventy-seven. Um, I'm in the butter, uh, directly across the street, so not immediately impacted as a, as a direct butter. But I do support, uh, Mr. Lewis's application for, for this variance. Um, I think it's of note that there is a fence, uh, between, uh, fifty-one Melville and Mr. Lewis's property. So in terms of visual impact, I, I don't really think there is much visual impact. Um, it is just a continuation of the side variance from the existing house structure. Um, and I understand there's, the stairs may extend a little bit towards the, uh, into the, uh. Protected area at the rear of the house, but again, I don't think it has, would have any adverse impact on the back, back neighbor. The, the other side is the MBTA right away. Um, and I don't think there's any impact whatsoever, uh, with respect to that, that. I, I'd say, just for the record, Tony's been a great neighbor and, and, uh, and friend over time for, you know, decades, in fact, and. Um, I, I strongly support this, uh, his application.
Thank you. Francis, any other raised hands?
Nope, no other raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, BPDA does have a recommendation for this one. Uh, approval with proviso that plans be submitted to the agency for design review with attention to maximizing rear yard usable open space. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion. With BPDA Design Review, motion of approval with BPDA Design Review. Paying special attention to the stair location. So as to maximize open area, open area. And to maximize the rear yard, uh, setback. And the second proviso is to, um, look at the massing so that the garage is an extension to the house.
Okay, uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Uh, Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Francis, are the other two cases on Drake it or Chestnut Ave?
Yes, I have one eighty-three Chestnut, um, Eileen. Eileen, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Eileen Oni, uh, one eighty-three Chestnut Avenue.
Okay, can you, uh, what are you proposing?
Uh, we're proposing to add a driveway, um, to the side of our property.
Okay, and what's the current condition?
Uh, there's no driveway currently.
What's the, uh, is there on-street parking?
He, uh, yes, there is street parking.
Okay. Um, Norm, do you have any recommendation from, uh, BTD?
Uh, from Bob D'Amico, we have, uh, what he wrote is one eighty-three Chestnut Street has parking on this side of the street. Spring Road. BTD disapproves of a space where on-street parking is present, request denied.
That's from Mr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any questions, uh, from the board?
Madam Chair, I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Mr. Stenbridge, any questions?
None, not present, Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, may I take public testimony?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, some background information on the community process. Our office hosted the Butters meeting over the summer. Um, there were some technical, technical questions from a Butters that were answered and addressed by the applicant and their team. Uh, the applicant then went on to receive support from the J P N C, uh, zoning committee. Uh, we do not have any letters of opposition at this time. Uh, with that, we defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony?
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh. For the record, BPDA recommends denial. Uh, a appellant is proposing one parking space. The curb cut would eliminate one on-street parking space. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, given that. Given that the J P N C. Voted, um, to support the project and that there was no opposition, and I, um. I, I feel like there's adequate space, uh, for this residential structure to have a parking space. I'm gonna put forward a motion, uh, to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Given the support, uh, I, the Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, is, uh, Drake it present?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a, a motion to deny without prejudice?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of denial without prejudice.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The Chair also votes yes, motion carries. We're done, I think. Are we done?
Yes, we are.
All right. Good job, everyone.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Hey.
Good night, everyone. Thank you, Francis.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.